So I apologize to everybody for the inconvenience, it's an inconvenience to all of us. But that is the situation. And George, if you'd like to add anything to that, please do.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And so the mayor's correct, there was an error on the posting, the notice posting of the time. So out of an abundance of caution, we're going to actually hold the items at 7:00 PM, which is the later time. But on every agenda, there's a public comment period as a special meeting for items that are on the agenda. So the public does have an opportunity to make comments now if you wish. The council won't be discussing the items though until seven. I just spoke with one neighbor a few minutes ago who thought that it would be more relevant for them to provide the public comment when the actual item is being discussed at 7:00 PM. So you have your option. You can do public comment now and speak. And then the council will hear the item later at seven, or you could return at seven o'clock. We'll be here. Nothing in between now and then for the item.
Sorry, was that somebody speaking that wasn't intelligible?
No, that was me. Sorry.
Okay. Okay, so we opened this meeting with general public comments that are on items on the agenda. So if you have, if you are on this call and you have a comment on either of these items on the agenda, now would be the time to provide that.
And, and with the mayor's permission, if I could add, I'm Anthony Super, the city clerk. I know we received several written public comments in advance of the meeting. And several come from, I believe, students, parents of students that attend both, both schools. Just as a bit of advice, if you'd like to make your comment, like the city manager said, now you're, you're welcome to do that. We have a three-minute time limit for those public comments. And so we ask that you be mindful of that. If, if appropriate, the best thing that I could, I could suggest is I can go through the names that I have that submitted those public comments. And if that, those members are on the phone, you can use the icon. I'm sure most of you students are very familiar with Zoom, probably better than us. So you can raise your hand at the bottom of the screen so that we can recognize you to calling you and make your public comment. We'll give you the unmute option. Or you can send them through the chat if you'd like to get that done. So with the mayor's permission, I can, I can do that now.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, so I'm just gonna start, I'm gonna go through the names here that I have. And actually, why don't I, why don't I start with the people that I see in the window? So I'm gonna start with Brady Kyle, if you'd like to make a public comment now. I'm gonna give you an opportunity to unmute yourself.
Yeah, I just think it's really important for not, not just all the players, but especially the younger players to be able to develop and gain what we all have from playing football, to have enough time to go out and play a safe game of football each week. But also just to be around the coaches and develop as young men like we have had the opportunity to.
Thank you, sir. I'm gonna just go down my, my list here of folks that I see. David Corsannati.
Yep, I just think that the lights would be very helpful for us because it'll help the underclassmen then develop and us develop and just create better relationships between us and our coaches with the extended time period we have going into the evening with the lights. It would just help us get a better team culture and just more prepared for the games and the practices ahead.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Will Murphy.
Yeah, I just think it's a huge thing for mental health for, for athletes. You know, to be able to go out, even if it's dark outside to be with their teammates and to build those relationships. I think it's huge for us.
Thank you. Elliot Kinder.
Yeah, I feel like my teammates have covered it well, but especially for young kids like freshmen who may not know many other students. It's a good opportunity to make the social connections that are difficult in this time.
Thank you. I just had a good suggestion. Maybe with the students addressing the, the council, you can let us know which school you represent. I believe that so far, all the students that spoke are Menlo School students because I just remember the, the names from the messages. But if you could just announce the school you represent, that may be helpful. I'm gonna call on Saz Ayuha. I'm sorry if I mispronounced that.
Yeah, I'm from Menlo as well. And I think the lights would be really beneficial for us. Just because in such hard times, like football is one of the only ways for us to establish the brotherhood. And the lights would really promote that for us. And I just wanna, I just think being out there with my football brothers is, is really important just because I'm alone on my computer all day. And I want to see them every day, being out there on the field.
Thank you. Chris, I'm not gonna try to pronounce your last name, Chris. I think it's D apostrophe Alingpong. Is that right?
Yeah, yeah, that's right. I think my teammates have already said a lot of very important things. And I think just besides the fact that it's gonna help us build, build our team. I think football builds us as young men as well, and will help prepare us for the rest of our lives. And I know it's already done that in a lot of ways for myself so far. And I think these lights would help tremendously for us to be able to have this season and practice. And I think it would help us tremendously with our lives in the future as well. So I think it's very important that we have them.
Thank you, Chris. Raniere Babaria.
Yeah, I just wanted to add that our program and our school is all about giving back. And I think the lights at the field will help us upperclassmen lead and it will help the lowerclassmen learn the game safely. That's all I had.
Thank you. Griffin Perks.
Yeah, I just think that having lights, like as everyone has said, it's much safer for the younger kids in the program. Like we can, they can learn the like difficulties that come with football. And it's just much safer for all of us to have lights and be able to practice for an extended amount of time.
Thank you. So, so that is, is the full list of students that I believe that I had. But I'm, I'm gonna go through the other names that I know submitted written public comments that I can see on the screen. Again, anybody participating, you can make a public comment by using the participants button at the bottom of your screen to raise your hand. You can send a message in our chat as well. If you're dialing in by phone, you can press star nine to raise your hand and we can call on you to make your comment. So I see Ms. Ashley Gessler, if you'd like, I can give you an opportunity to make a comment as well.
Anthony, before, before that, can we make the, make it clear again that we're only taking the public comment during the public comment period here. Though the actual items will be discussed at 7:00 PM, there'll be an additional opportunity for public comment at that time. So you can choose to make it here or you can choose to make it later at 7:00 PM. You don't have to make it here.
Great. Hi, thank you for your time today. I am a parent of a Menlo football athlete. And I think this is just so important for these student athletes to be able to have time to practice and be together and be with their coaches. They've had to sacrifice so much of their season and their time, and this is so important to their mental health. And as a community, I really hope that we can come together to support them any way we can. So thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Ashley. I also see that I have. I don't see any other names who've submitted written comments unless, and again, if somebody wants to speak now, you're able to do so by raising your hand with the bottom button feature, participants, or through the chat window. Pamela Flynn, give me one moment.
And while we're, while we're doing that, I just want to underscore how important it is for all of you to let us know your thoughts and your concerns. Ashley, I really appreciate you sending in your email. It gave us a chance to think about it and look at it ahead of time. Anyone else who has other comments that wishes to send us an email, you can do that. And Anthony will give you that email address. It's very, very helpful to us to hear what all of your thoughts and concerns are. It's very important. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Josh Wyatt raises his hand to speak, and I'll post that information in the chat window now.
Hi, yeah, I'm also from Menlo. Just like everyone else has already said, I think it's really important that we are able to get on the field and train our body and our minds. As it's improving our physical health and mental health in a time where we can't really get outside as much and can't kind of interact with other people. And so I think it's very, very important for all of us.
Thank you, Josh. I believe Pamela Flynn would also like to make a public comment. And I see Catherine Harrison. I'm gonna give you an opportunity now. Ms. Harrison.
Thank you. Yes, I'm a Menlo parent. My son Henry Kirin is also on this call, I believe, and he's a football player. And for me, when I think about this, I know we're making an extraordinary request. But the analog for me is the people dining in the streets of Palo Alto and Menlo Park today. The city is allowing that because these are extraordinary times to keep those businesses alive. And these young men are in the business of growing up and then the business of learning how to be man and learning how to be a team and learning how to develop character. And my hope is that we'll be able to do that for them as a community.
Thank you. Ms. Pamela Flynn.
She's unable to comment. She put that in the chat window, Anthony.
Okay, sorry. There's any other public comments? I'm just gonna search the room. Again, you can use the raise hand feature or send me a message to the chat. I don't see any others with their hands raised indicated like to make a public comment. For anybody that's recently joined the meeting, I'd just like to reiterate that the staff will make a formal presentation at the 7:00 PM meeting. So this is a precursor to that. Mayor, I don't see any other hands raised with, or any other messages to indicate that there are additional public comments.
Anthony, I'm sorry, this is John Noel. We were technologically challenged here, so we couldn't find the raise the hand feature. So please don't mind muting myself. But I appreciate that the time I'd sent you an email earlier today. I mean, obviously, a ton of great points. I'll just, my wife and I have three, well, two kids now at Menlo, one of which plays football. We did graduate. Played last year. So we, we firsthand testimony to how important the program is, the development of our, our kids and for the broader Menlo community. But the only point I wanted to make was if the pandemic has taught us all anything, it's that there's so, we're so little in control and really the small gestures are the things that each day all of us can do to collectively, you know, help us all get through this. And those accumulation of those small gestures actually make real difference. And I think, not, not to call this a small gesture potentially on behalf of the, the town of Atherton. But I do think this will have extraordinary impact across the community because it really does matter to each individual participant. And that cascades its way through the school, the parents, how these kids behave at home. And so I just hope that like we all are doing in our day-to-day lives, we can look to make, you know, a small contribution here to, for the betterment of our community. And I know, like anything else in this world right now, there, there's never 100% agreement on anything. But I hope that, you know, that the vast majority of us can agree that something like this can't possibly hurt. It can only help all of our kids and all of our community.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Smith.
Yeah, and I appreciate it. Thank you to everybody in the Menlo community. I sent you guys quite a lengthy email. I'm sure you guys have read it. And a lot of our athletes have touched on many of the points I talked about. I just want to magnify injury prevention and a small comment. The importance of lights is paramount to safety. From an injury prevention lens, our outstanding training staff will have a magnified tool to immediately assess, diagnose, and treat onsite injuries. This will also ensure to our community that safety was prioritized when making this decision. Thank you for your consideration.
Thanks, sir. If there are any others that would like to make a public comment, again, you have a few options available to you. But I don't see any other hands raised. So I'll bring it back to you, Mayor Degolia.
Okay, I think that at this point, we're not gonna take questions from the council or bring it back to the council. We're gonna wait until we've received all the public comments at 7:00 PM. So if I have a motion to continue, I think we'll be continuing this meeting at 7:00 PM, right?
Move.
I'm happy to make that motion, Rick.
I'm happy to second it.
And before you, before you take a vote on that, Mr. Mayor, there was a request for consideration of flipping the two items. I don't know if that still stands, Vice Mayor.
Yes, excuse me, through the mayor, I would really request, since I'm going to be recused from the Sacred Heart discussion because of my proximity to the field. I would respectfully request that you move the Menlo School item to be discussed first. And then I can sign off. I do have a San Francisco Airport Noise Abatement Roundtable that does begin at 7:00 PM. And so if we can discuss the Menlo School first, it will give me more time to join up on that meeting. Thank you.
Great. I don't think that's a problem. Does anybody on the council have a problem with that? Okay, we'll make that switch. Can we have a roll call, please?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Weest.
Yeah.
Whitmer.
Yeah.
Councilmember Lempers.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Lewis.
Yes.
And Mayor Degolia.
Yes.
With that, we will continue the meeting until 7:00 PM.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, everyone, for your comments.
Yep.
Anthony, same.
We really appreciate it.
Anthony, I'm sorry, same, same web link when we come back, same Zoom.
Yeah, I'm gonna keep the whole meeting open the whole entire time, just with a graphic. So if anybody joins in, they can see what we're gonna do. And, and I'll stay engaged in case anybody has a question during the, the break.
Okay. Thank you again for your comments, and we apologize for the inconvenience. And we'll see you at seven.
Thank you.
And yes, we will need to do a roll call, please.
Say that again, Mona.
We will need to do a roll call and we'll need to open up the meeting again.
Yeah, I've just opened the meeting. Why don't Anthony, you do the roll call again?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Weest.
Here.
Whitmer.
Here.
Councilmember Lempers.
Present.
Vice Mayor Lewis.
Here.
And Mayor Degolia.
Yes, I'm here.
Thank you.
Okay, so we have public comment at the beginning of the meeting for items on the agenda. If you wish to make a public comment now, you can. We have two items on the agenda. One concerns Menlo School and the other concerns Sacred Heart, each dealing with the, with the request for lighting on the field, which is a request that normally can be managed by the city manager, but he's chosen to bring it to the city council because it's such an important issue for the public in general. And if you wish to make a comment, you could do so now. But if you wish to make a comment specific to one of the items, when they come up, we will take public comment for each of those items. So you can wait and do it at that time.
And Mayor, with your permission, I'd just like to add, for anyone that is joining us and already made their public comment during the opening of the first session earlier. You certainly don't need to make a comment again at this time. The council was able to hear those comments and, and they have been taken into consideration. In addition to the people who are on the call who submitted comments in writing, those have also been received by the city council, and they will also be able to take those into consideration without you having to make them again tonight. So I just want to make that point clearly. If you would like to make a public comment and you're joining the call, you have a few options. You can post it in our chat feature. We allow that. You can use the participants button at the bottom of your screen to raise your hand, and we will allow that. Or if you're dialing in by phone, you can press star nine on your, your telephone, and that will give us an option to give you a chance to, to raise your hand. So again, as the, the mayor said, you can make your comment during the item or we'll take them now. So I'll open the floor up for public comments. If you've already made them, just be mindful that we try to keep these to a, a window of three minutes. And I will look for any hands that are raised now as we're admitting people still into the meeting. So I see Steve Miller. I'm gonna give you an opportunity now to one second, sir. So if you'd like to, to make your comments, sir, you're able to do so.
Great. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, sir.
Okay, great. It's Steve Miller. Thank you for letting me comment. I'm a resident of Atherton. I grew up here. I've lived here most of my life, attended Menlo. I had four children that attended Menlo. One currently is still there. And I'm on the board of the school. My comment is, I feel like in the environment we're in, everyone needs to help each other out a little bit and come together and show a little flexibility and grace. I think this really is a way, this request really is a way for the community to come together by allowing what I think and, and consider to be a temporary hardship variance. This certainly isn't obviously a permanent request. This is a temporary hardship benefit. I'm sorry, temporary hardship variance. And in my view, by granting it, the council can convey enormous benefits to the health of kids, many of whom are Atherton residents, but also from many other diverse communities. And, you know, you look at COVID and you look at all the statistics and all the things that are obvious about COVID. I think everyone on this call knows that there are many less obvious statistics in the form of mental health for students that have been isolated for months from classrooms, from social interactions, and then relevant to, to this case, sports. And I, I look at the school, the school's been around for 100 years. They've been a great neighbor. You know, I, I'll mention this because I feel like we're kind of in a war now. In the last war, and not the last war, but World War II, the school turned its gym into a shooting range for the benefit of the community. And I feel like we're in a war now. I feel like the school is asking for a little grace for the benefit of a broad range of students. And to me, it's a very reasonable request and one I hope the council will, will grant. Thank you for listening.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Just a point of clarification. Are you continuing the public comment period from earlier, or are you moving on to the items?
No, I'm continuing the public comment period from earlier, although I have let people know that if they wish to make the comment specific to one of those items, they don't need to make it now. They can make it after staff has given its report and we're discussing the item.
Okay, just clarifying. Thank you.
Thank you. With that clarification, does anybody else would like to make their public comment now? Or again, as the mayor and the city manager noted, you can wait until staff's presentation has been done to, to comment on your specific item. And I don't, I don't see any other hands or indications that they would like to make their comment. So with that, Mayor.
We, we will now go to what has been identified as item number four. This is the special event permit to allow temporary lights at Carton Field for Menlo School.
Good evening. Lisa Costa-Sanders, Town Planner. I'll be giving the presentation this evening. And Anthony's kind enough to share the presentation screen with you, and he'll be advancing the slides. So good evening. The item before you is a request from Menlo School for a special event permit. You go to the next slide. Menlo School is located at 50 Dalper ISO. The school would like to utilize temporary lights at Carton Field, which is located at the corner of El Camino Real and Alejandra Avenue. The school is located within the public facilities and schools zoning district. Next. Menlo Schools request a special event permit to allow temporary field lights to accommodate athletic activities during the COVID-19 pandemic. Menlo School has modified their request since their original application. They've changed the date range to remove the week of December 14th. And they now request starting on January 4th and continuing through March 12th. And this will be for weekdays only. And the lights would be requested to be up until 6:15 PM, which allows some time for cleanup at the field. They would like to utilize the lights at Carton Field and only utilize Wonder Look Field as needed. Next. The Carton Football Field is located adjacent to El Camino Real at the corner of Alejandra Avenue. Single-family homes are located to the west of the baseball fields on Brittany Meadows. And single-family homes are located to the north along Isabella. As shown on the map, Menlo School proposes to locate up to six temporary lights along the perimeter of the football field. The temporary lights are low-level lights that will be directed downward towards the field to have minimal light spill over. The lights are powered by diesel generators, and the noise from the generators will comply with the town's noise ordinance. Next slide. Carton Football Field is a grass field. And in the event of heavy rains and the field is determined to be unusable, the school would like to utilize Wonder Look Field, which is an artificial turf field. Wonder Look Field is located along Alejandra Avenue with single-family homes located to the west and north of that field. Separate lights will not be installed on Wonder Look Field, but will be brought over from Carton Field on an as-needed basis only. Next. This special event permit request This special event permit request is limited to temporary lights for a limited duration during the COVID-19 pandemic. The school is required to comply with any county and state COVID-19 regulations for the activities that will occur on the field. All other town regulations remain in effect, including compliance with the town's noise ordinance. Next. The school sent a letter to neighbors informing them of the proposed project and the town mailed and published notice of this hearing on November 20th. That notice was mailed to all property owners within 500 feet of the site and posted in the almanac. Next. We've received comments from several adjacent neighbors expressing concern with the proposal. Those concerns include impacts with increased noise, concern that this would be a precedent-setting event, and concern with the risk of increased COVID infections due to the activities at the field. As noted previously, the school is required to comply with county and state COVID regulations and the use is required to comply with the town's noise ordinance. Finally, the city attorney can expand on this, but this really is a unique situation due to the COVID pandemic and it is not considered precedent-setting for any future requests. The town has also received several letters that are in support of utilizing lights at the field. And the next slide, I have the motion which has been amended to accommodate the change in the request. So if you choose to approve this, this is the motion you would make to allow the temporary lights at Menlo School for athletic practice from January 4th through March 14th until 6:15 PM on weekdays at Carton Field and Wonder Look Field as needed. I'd be happy to try to answer any of your questions. And the school is also here this evening and would like to make some comments. Thank you. That concludes staff's presentation. Are there any questions of staff?
I think the mayor was unmuting.
Oh, thank you.
Are there any questions for members of the council? Questions, clarification, Mike?
Yeah, I do. Just a couple of questions. One is, how does this affect the college in any way? Menlo College?
I could have applicant answer that, but this would not apply to Menlo College. The field would only be used for Menlo School.
Okay. And then would it, would practices go on on weekends? What would, what would happen on weekends during this time period?
I would rather have the applicant answer that, but this is for lights that would be weekdays only. So the lights would not be utilized on the weekends, but I can have the applicant expand on any activities that would occur on the weekends.
Oh, I have.
Thank you.
Through the chair. Through the, through the mayor. So I, a couple of questions about the use of the Wonder Look Field, which would be, I think, more problematic for the residents than the Carton Field. The ratio, have we done any? It's going to be as needed and it's only if there's heavy rains. Who's going to determine that? And what's the probability and how many times is that going to be used?
Yeah, so that's really difficult to gauge because I don't have the weather predictions in place yet for that time period. So it would be hard to determine, but I'd certainly defer to the applicant as to it's, it's their, really their call if the fields are determined to be unusable. That wouldn't be a town determination. And it would be, you know, several rain days that rain, that field would be not safe to utilize. And so they would be making that determination. So it's hard to guess at this point without knowing what the weather conditions may be.
Okay. The other question I have is, how are they going to mitigate any other ambient noise coming from the practices during that time? Not only the lights, but like the additional coaching noises, whistles, yelling, screaming. It's just practice, right? It's drills. And then I do think that the COVID component, the implication of increased risk of spreading COVID really should be considered. How many kids are going to be on the field at any one time?
Yes, so the town would rely on compliance with the noise regulations. So there's no amplified sound would be allowed. That would include a boombox or, you know, PA system. And then for the COVID restrictions, we're going to rely on the expertise of the county and the state as to how and what kind of activities can be conducted. I believe at this time, it's very limited in what activities and they need to be separated from the space perspective and they could do some skills training. But I can also have the applicant expand on, on their understanding of the regulations that are in effect.
Like the contact tackling and, you know, stuff like that. I don't know.
Yeah, I don't believe that's allowed at this time, but hopefully we improve our conditions. And, you know, we're in a, in a different stage where that would be allowed, but at this time they're going to need to rely and comply with the county and state regulations.
Right. I'm sure parents would be worried also about it. Okay. Thank you.
Hey, Bill. You're, you're muted, Bill.
When does Menlo School come back to school from the holiday break? Is it on the fourth?
I'll have the applicant respond to that.
Okay. Like Elizabeth, I'd like to know what the type of activities the students are going to be doing. And I'd like to know what sort of testing they're doing. So if you go to any intercollegiate sports program or any, you know, high school programs in many other areas, they have a rigorous testing program and rigorous, you know, verification. So you know, I was on the county call this morning or this afternoon with, with, with George and they're not predicting things getting better anytime soon. In fact, they're predicting that they may have further, a lot further, deeper restrictions. So I think, you know, we need to also understand, you know, what that's going to mean to this. I assume that they would then remove the lights. Is that right?
If there's no, if they're not allowed to have field activities per COVID regulations, then there would be no need to have the lights operable. Yes. And so we could certainly make that a condition of approval.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much. And so the applicant will answer the other questions.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Carrie, do you have a question?
Yeah, I do. The, if, if a positive test for COVID occurs or something occurs to one of the players, what's the protocol? Currently?
I'd need to have the applicant respond to that.
Mr. Mayor, back to you, sir.
Rick, if I could, I did one more question. Carrie, look in my head. I'm, I'm just not aware of what the constraints are now on the field. But if, if it, if the sun is up later than 6:15, what restrictions are there on practice? Like if, you know, if it's May or whatever, what restrictions are there in terms of the time of practice ends?
I need to refer back to the use permit, but I'm not sure if we have time restrictions. They're allowed to use the, the field during the light hours.
Okay.
I have a question that we really will probably go to the applicant and we'll ask the, as soon as the questions are done. So it may be the last question, but I did read in the almanac today that CIF has stricter regulations, including a cancellation of all athletic practices. And I mean, my understanding of that just
You're breaking up.
But if you could address that, Fan, when you address us, that would be helpful.
So I missed, I missed what the mayor was asking there.
Well, I, I'm asking that Than addressed the issue of what the current regulations are from CIF, because the almanac today reported that CIF had canceled all games and practices. And I think the games had previously been canceled, but the way the almanac article read was that the practices is a new provision with this recent surge.
Wow.
I would think so. I mean, makes sense.
So if, if there are no other questions, then I think that it would be appropriate to have the applicant address us and after that we'll take public comments. And Anthony, if you could unmute Than so he can speak, that would be great.
Than should have the
Good evening, everyone. Thanks for the time. My name is Stan Healy. I'm the head of school here at Menlo School. It's a pleasure to be in front of you tonight. I have a few remarks that will provide some context. May answer some of the questions that you asked and then I would invite you to re-ask any questions that I, that I didn't address. Obviously have a lot to say about our safety protocols. We're proud of what we're doing here at Menlo. I would say not only is it meeting county guidelines, but it's exceeding by a good deal. I wish that everybody was practicing the county guidelines or the guidelines that we put in place at Menlo School. I think the county would be in a different position if they would. But, but like Sacred Heart, we're very much here with a request that I view as, as pandemic relief. You may know that athletics, athletic programs across the state, but certainly at Menlo School have been constrained since last March. And inner-school competition and practices, as you note, Mayor DeGolia, have not yet have been approved by the CCS or by CIF. Part of the reason that we adjusted our request this evening not to include the December dates was that the CIF had originally indicated that practices would begin on December 14th. Yesterday, they amended that order to say that they would not, they wouldn't have practices any earlier than January 1st. That may be pushed back further. Of course, we'll comply with whatever the CIF and the CCS requests, but, but, but when we're allowed to practice, we would like the opportunity to do so. Nevertheless, since last March, we know that movement and fresh air as well as interaction with peers is critical to the mental and physical health of our kids. Since August, we've been running on-campus workouts for our athletes and any student who wishes to join. And we've done that successfully and safely in ways that exceed the guidelines established by the San Mateo County Department of Health. Our athletes are distanced, they're masked when they're not undergoing heavy physical exertion. They're outdoors at all times. We sanitize every surface that they touch. And we have mandatory weekly COVID testing on our campus. We've administered thousands of tests at this point. We just finished a month of having students on campus. And of those thousands of tests, three came back positive prior to the students coming to campus. Those students were quarantined and we have had zero incidents of any positive tests following participation in on-campus activities. We've also delivered this athletic program with an even smaller impact on our neighbors. You may hear tonight from some folks that our request is an imposition and I certainly understand that. My, my hope is that as you consider our request, you also keep in mind that our neighbors were also prepared, spared any noise or field usage for nearly six months between March and August. And significantly reduced noise since August. We've had no games. We've had no significant traffic. We've had no fan noise. I think it's been quite good for our neighbors. Similarly to, to Councilmember Lempres's question, our CUP requires that we vacate the fields at sundown. In the summertime, as you all know, sundown is quite late. We don't think it's right for our neighbors to, to exercise our privilege and our right to be able to be out there until sundown. The request that we're making now is for a little bit of similar grace. But now that the sun is going down earlier, now that we don't have the option of going indoors, now that we don't have a way of executing this athletics program in any other manner, that we might have some relief now that the sun is going down earlier. What we're asking for tonight is really simple. As I said, now that days are darker earlier and the county has not allowed us to move our activities indoors, a decision that we support, we'd like to maintain some semblance of an athletics program for students who wish to participate. The application before you reflects an exceedingly conservative request, in our opinion. We're requesting the use of limited low throw lights on weekdays only until 6:15 PM from January 4th to March 14th. Nine weeks. One of those weeks is a vacation week. We don't intend to practice in the afternoons. To Councilmember Lempres's question earlier, we don't intend to practice in the afternoons on weekends. On Saturdays, when we typically practice mid-morning, we'll continue to do that. We'd like to, we, all things being equal, we'd love to be out there during daylight hours. It's safer for kids. It's better for students. It's better for our coaches. It's better for our training staff. It's the right thing to do. But when our hands are tied, we need to ask for relief. We know that on weekends and school breaks, we can practice during daylight hours and we'll do so because it's best for everyone. We're asking primarily for the use of lights on carton because it's the furthest from any of our neighbors by a good distance. We've included a request, as noted, for Wonder Look Field as a backup in the case of inclement weather that compromises our ability to use carton safely. And as you heard earlier, carton is a grass field and Wonder Look features natural, artificial turf. I, as staff mentioned, I don't have an insight as to the weather predictions for the, for the winter. I know that we're in the middle of a 15-year drought. But I, but I can't see the future of how many days that would mean. I wish I could. I would be a lot richer of a person if I could predict the weather in California. We understand that unlike our peers at Sacred Heart, we have neighbors who live closer to us, which is why we're requesting two fields instead of three and really one, if the weather cooperates. We're asking for earlier hours and we're asking for fewer days. We've intentionally avoided a request to use our baseball field because we know its proximity to neighbors. And if we had another turf field other than Wonder Look that was further from the neighbors, we would be using that. We've gone out of our way to request use on a field that's hundreds of yards away from our neighbors' fence line at Carton Field. Some people may wonder why we can't start earlier in the afternoon. We're planning on starting practice as soon as we possibly can, factoring in travel time to school for our students. Now that we're in distance learning mode with students learning from home, getting to our fields is not as simple as simply walking across campus. Even in January, when we hope to have 50% of our students on campus in alternating weeks, half of our students participating in activities will need to come to Menlo from home, which precludes earlier start times. I've heard concerns about precedent and I guess you need to trust me when I say that no one wants to be making this request less than me. It's a pandemic-specific request that we bring forward because of the extraordinary times that we find ourselves in. Had the CCS not pushed the start dates of our fall season back until January 1st at the earliest or the county had allowed us to practice indoors, we'd be doing so and we'd be doing so with gusto. I would urge you not to consider this as anything akin to our homecoming football game request from two falls ago. They're apples and oranges. Were we able tomorrow to return to our regular athletics program and have most of our sports indoors and our football team wrapping up a season with shorter practices to avoid the darkness? I'd do so in a heartbeat and I'd relieve all of you of having to spend your time hearing this request. I guess I'll make one more point before I conclude and then I'm happy to take questions. It may be tempting to approve one high school's request tonight and deny another. And though we will certainly survive as a school with such a decision, I'm also confident that such a choice will only be read one way by the citizens of Atherton. That this town council supports and favors the students of one school and cares little about the students of another school. I recognize myself that there would be so much more nuance behind such a decision. But as is the case with all decisions like this, one never has the opportunity to explain fully that nuance. And the decision is left to be interpreted on its own. In this respect, I don't envy the position that you're in this evening. It's my hope that you recognize in this request that we've asked for only what we believe we need, that we've done everything in our power to recognize, respect and address the needs of our neighbors. And then in the end, you consider the students, some of whom you, some of whom you heard from earlier today and others whom you may hear from later tonight, who will be well-served by this very conservative request at a time frankly, when our kids are bearing the brunt of this pandemic. So maybe with that, I'll thank you for your time and consideration and I'm happy to answer any questions that you have.
Am I doing the calling on?
So why don't you go first?
Yeah, Rick. Yeah, so, so Than, thanks for that. You didn't answer one of my questions and that was, when is school starting? Is it starting concurrently with the request date on the 4th of January?
January 4th is our first day back from the winter break.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions, Mike?
Yeah, if I could. Is there any way to quantify what this means, Than?
If I could, is there any way to quantify what this means, Dan? Meaning, is there if if this is denied, are there going to be X number of students who are not able, student athletes who are not able to practice, or? You know, is there, can you put any quantity around the difference between getting this this request granted and this request denied?
It's a great question. We have about seven, we have 795 students that attend the school. In the high school, about 625 students. 80% of our students play some form of athletics. Doesn't mean they all play football, doesn't all mean that they play ball sports. But it's a significant percentage of our students that that participate in athletics. The number is actually a little bit higher this year because we're finding that students are looking for this outlet. Even if they know they're never going to play a single game in the year, we're seeing more students turn out for a team because they they want some physical activity. They need some physical activity. Restricting this, it's not gonna, I will admit that it, look, if we don't have lights, we'll make do with what we can. It may mean that we can have kids out there from four to four forty-five or four to five o'clock. I think starting much before four is going to be challenging for us. School doesn't end until three fifteen, and then students are coming from, you know, sometimes far away to get to campus. So it's challenging. It's not impossible. We'll overcome it. But I also have to say it'll be a profound impact on on the kids. It'll really restrict their ability to participate. For our football team, which is, as you know, a collision sport, not a contact sport. We spend a lot of time working on technique to have our kids be safe out there. We play in a league where we play against bigger athletes at bigger schools with greater numbers, and I'm proud of what our boys do out there. But it takes time. We we need to have the practice time to keep our kids safe. And football, if it's allowed to play, and there's no guaranteeing that they will or that they won't at this point, but if they're allowed to play, we feel an obligation to put them in a position to be as safe as possible, and for that, we need time on the practice field. So so I guess if I was quantifying where my concerns are, it's with our football team. I'm not as worried that our cross-country athletes are going to be unprepared. There are ways of working out and running in the dark. It's just not possible with a football program. I don't know if that answers your question.
Yeah, it does. Thank you.
And I have a question. You said that this was, the request is a January fourth to March fourteenth period, excluding the weekends, and there's one week of vacation.
Correct.
And when it, what is that week of vacation?
It's the President's Day week. I believe it's February fourteenth to the nineteenth.
Okay. Thank you. Are there any other questions for Fan? Okay, seeing none, we'll take public comment. Anthony, do you want to manage the public comment? I know you've gotten quite a number of comments, and I just want to repeat that if you have sent a comment to the council, they have all been distributed to us. You don't need to repeat it. You're you're able to make a statement if you wish, but you don't need to. We have seen what you said, and I don't want to discourage you from doing it, but I just am trying to manage the time. In addition, if you've already spoken, we've obviously heard you. You don't you don't need to repeat it. But we welcome your public comment. We appreciate your public comment. It's very important for us to hear from our residents so we understand what your concerns and your needs and your perspectives are. And I will let Anthony manage the public comment. And and there are several ways that you can indicate to him that you'd like to give a comment if you haven't done so.
Thank you, Mayor. I know that we have at least one person who's already indicated they'd like to speak. Stephanie Dishar, I think you're unmuted, and you have the floor. Please, all again, just as the mayor noted, be mindful of the the time constraints. I'm going to give you a three-minute clock, and I'll just give you notifications if you get close. You have the floor, Stephanie.
Okay, thank you so much, Anthony. I I think I tried to use a, I tried to attach it, my Google Drive to the Zoom, and I'm not able to use the, I'm not able to show the screens that I'd like to be able to, I'd like to show. But I think the most important thing is, I'm wondering if if it's okay to go about to to skirt the Menlo, the Atherton laws about about. Well, let's just go through this. So Menlo was given a conditional use permit in order to start a school, and the very first provision of the conditional use permit says that there won't be any lights. So now Menlo, after being expressly denied the right to lights, fills out a special event, a school special event form, asking for lights. But when you look at the school's special event form, it says that any temporary lights shall be downlit, and you can't get temporary lighting if you don't get a special event permit. Well, when you go to the Atherton Municipal Code for a special event permit, the municipal code says that a special event cannot be longer than two weeks, and any event for a longer period of time requires a conditional use permit. Well, Menlo's conditional use permit says they can't have lights. So are we just going to ignore the laws that Atherton has written? I don't understand how any of it is legal. Then, when we go and look at the lights that Atherton, that Menlo is proposing, not only are they diesel engines that are fueling the lights, but I've said this to the town council, so you have a copy. These lights at 20 feet emit 71 decibels of sound. The municipal code maxes noise, it's a violation of the noise ordinance if it's over 60 decibels. We're looking at 71. The the municipal code also provides that if it's a steady hum, such as generator lights, that the maximum decibels will be reduced by five. So 55 decibels is the maximum that the noise ordinance will allow. But these lights have 71 decibels of noise. And they're being put on fields that are right next to residential homes. The Atherton Master Plan, the administrative draft, says that 70 decibels is the equivalent of a freight train. So what Menlo is asking for is their neighbors, for almost, for more than 20% of the year, three hours a day, five days a week, live with a freight train continuously going next to their windows and doors. So the thing is, if 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 Menlo had been a more considerate neighbor, which they claim to be, the residents wouldn't be so upset. But in fact, I've sent this to the town council. There are pages and pages of pictures and documentation showing you that Menlo has not been a considerate neighbor. If you if you look at what happened on Wonderlic Field, where they're, originally, they turfed a field that respected the the setbacks on the sides, not against the street, but on the sides. And then they said they had to emergency re-turf the field, and when they did that, they designed a whole new field that has two, two soccer fields that intersect right in the corner where it's the the heaviest use of that field is is right up against the residence's house.
Miss Dishar, I'm going to ask you to, just if you could, please wrap it up in the next couple of seconds, please. Thank you, though.
Okay, I'll just stop there because I'll stop because I don't see how you can follow the law and allow these lights. There has to be a way for Menlo to to get by and be within the legal limits that are set by the town.
Thank you again. Again, we're in the public comments portion of the meeting. If you'd like to make a public comment, you are able to use the option at the bottom of your screen where it says participants, raise your hand. You can send a message to me in our chat window. Or if you're dialing in by phone, you can dial star nine on your receiver, and that will raise your hand so that you can make a public comment. We'll keep it open, I think, for a few minutes with the permission of the mayor, but at this time, I don't have, I don't have any other indications of public comment, but please note that, as the mayor stated, I see Mr. Paul Getty. Okay, I'm going to give you an opportunity, Mr. Getty, to raise your hand. You should be able to unmute yourself.
Yeah, hi. Thanks, everyone. I'm really curious as to what other options have been explored by the school. I mean, there are many other areas that that this practice could be done on. I also hear the comment that people cannot start practicing until four o'clock. I mean, is that true of other sports activities? I mean, why are we being tasked with the full responsibility of having to deal with this when you have Palmer Park, you've got other areas that are nearby that perhaps could accommodate what's being requested here?
Is that the conclusion of your comments, sir?
Yes.
Thank you.
You have my other written comments.
Yes, sir, and that has been distributed. With that, I have Brian Matar. Please take the floor, sir.
Yes, thank you. My name is Brian Matra. I am a Menlo alumni and a former Menlo football player, and I currently have a younger brother on the Menlo football team. Menlo football had a profound impact on my life and played a major role in allowing me to become the man I am today. If you've never played football, I understand. It's probably hard to grasp the grind and effort it takes year in to, and the weekly effort it takes to train for football and to have your season stripped away from you at the last minute due to an issue over lights would be probably one of the worst feelings. To the neighbors who oppose the use of temporary lights, I understand it may go against some municipal codes, but I think we could all agree these are truly unprecedented circumstances. Um, I think that it ultimately comes to the question of how do lights until six fifteen truly affect you? I mean, there's practices throughout fall that go past six fifteen because there's natural light. And yes, these practices are somewhat noisy, but I I've been through these practices. It's not the sound of a freight train. And I've seen these types of lights on fields before. To characterize them as the sound of a freight train is just a massive mischaracterization. If the worry is that it's a slippery slope that will lead to like lights being used in more cases, I just point you back to the fact that these are really, really unprecedented circumstances of having a pandemic that is preventing that prevented fall football and now requires the possibility of winter football that would need lights. Now, I've heard comments about COVID. I would just point, this isn't an issue of COVID. If COVID prevents Menlo football from happening, Menlo football won't happen. This is in the event that the there is some way in which Menlo football can happen, and then these lights will become vital to getting enough practice time to form a competent football team that can compete in the ocean division. It would be a shame if this team's season is taken away because they cannot practice enough. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Brian. Do we have any other public comments? Anybody who would like to address the council? The permission of the mayor will leave that open for a few more seconds while I scroll through, see if we have any other additional comments.
Can you hear me? This is Mickey King?
Yes, sir. You have the floor.
Thank you very much. I will take only a couple, one, less than a minute. My wife, Elizabeth, and I bought this property at 69 Alejandra in 1977. And at that time, Wonderlic wasn't Wonderlic. It was a grass field, and yes, there were some practices on it, but it was very quiet. The traffic was very, very low, and and what we've been through for the last 40 years or so is a constant growth in noise, traffic, trespassers in our yard, speeding, parking problems, the whole bit. My biggest problem is noise, and the person that just spoke needs to look at the specs on the diesels that go with the lights that have been proposed. 71 decibels is a lot of noise, and there's six of them. So that's, you know, a lot more than 71. At any rate, I played football. I played baseball. I played the track in the winter in Chicago, and it was pretty short and pretty cold. But we did it, and we 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 actually came in second in the state of Illinois in football. And I agree, it's it's a very healthy thing to do. It builds bonding. It builds teamwork. It builds lifelong friends. And it's very important. But why it has to have an extra hour at the end with lights that just absolutely are deleterious to the neighborhood and and property values is not something I fully understand. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. I will look for additional public comments. Again, if you're just joining the call, we've had a few people join. If you'd like to make a public comment, you can raise your hand using the participants button feature at the bottom of the screen. Dial star nine on your phone receiver if you're calling in or send a message to the chat. Mayor, I don't see any additional public comments on the line, so I think with your permission, if you'd like to close public comment, you can do so.
We have no further public comment. We'll close public comment and bring it back to council for any further questions and comments. Bill? You're muted.
Sorry about that. Lisa, on the issue with the lights and the noise, I don't recall seeing the specs on the lights. I saw a picture of the thing and how it was going to be, but I didn't see the specs. Have you verified this noise component and and then under, and and then discuss with Menlo School if, in fact, it does exceed what other alternatives there might be, you know, and compare that to what's happening over Sacred Heart?
Sure. So Menlo School did send me information on the generator that would be utilized, and it indicates a rating of a range of 48 to 57 dBA. And they're anticipating, given the load that would be required of the generator, be within the lower range. And so the town's regulation is at 60 dBA until 10 PM, but as noted, that reduces by five dBA during the if it's a steady noise. So what we could do is have, at time of installation, have that verified because it's measured from the property line. And when located on Carton Field, it's quite a distance from the receiving property line. So our town police department is quite trained on how to use those noise meters, and they could go out there and measure it to ensure that it does comply with the noise ordinance prior to them being allowed to utilize it. We can add that as a condition of approval as well.
Yeah, as a follow-up, you know, I I don't think that, and I didn't hear that the the concern necessarily was Carton Field because there's only a few houses, and maybe one of the speakers here was living on Isabella, but they seem to be pretty far away from Isabella. That said, the Wonderlic seems to be the issue because, you know, the fields go right up almost to the fence line. And but they were built before we had all of our ordinances in place. And so obviously, the diesels will be right up against the fence line because they can't be in the middle of the field. And so I can see where that could cause some issues for the neighbors. So, you know, perhaps, yeah.
Thank you. You're correct. I did ask the Mr. Healy to take a look at how he could locate the practices at the Wonderlic Field and how he could locate the lights. So and if you have a response to that, this would be a good time then for where the light standards would be located on Wonderlic.
I'd actually defer to our athletic director, Earl Cobeline, who may be able to give more specific information about the exact location of the lights.
Yeah, hi. Thanks. Thanks, Dan. Thank you all for listening to our request tonight. As we mentioned, the the Wonderlic Field would be our last resort. We we understand that is closer to the neighbors. We would probably put all the practices at Carton as best we can. And we're also talking about putting electric lights out there, not diesel. So the sound is a lot less. The generators are a lot quieter. We've taken everything into consideration with the the neighbors in mind while trying to help our student athletes. With that said, the Wonderlic, we would put it as far away, we would originate the field, coaches would get creative, and we'd get it far away from the fence lines we could on Wonderlic. Obviously, it's not as ideal as Carton, but we would do our best to move as far away as we could and be creative with our field.
So so did I hear you say that you were, for all the fields, you're going with electric, or it's just if you have to move over to Wonderlic?
We are looking into our options, and one of the options is the electric. We're trying to pursue that to make sure. The one question, it doesn't have as much power as far as the the coverage, illumination. So we need to once we figure out if it's if it's enough, we would use the electric. If we have to use a diesel to get the coverage, we are looking into sound barriers that are lower the DBAs as well. We've gotten quotes on those. So our first choice is go with the electric. And make that, hopefully make that work.
We're also happy to comply with Ms. Costa Sanders' suggestion with that we do some some early read, sound readings out there at the times that we'd be running it, that we'd be, in fact, that'd be helpful to be able to do that early and get an early read and see where we can make adjustments to make it work.
So Fan, along that line.
So, Fan, along that line, since uh this would not start until January, I I would think that you could be able to check that out in December and uh hopefully you'll get the information on on the possibility of the electric replacement, which sounds like a uh much better solution. But I I I think it's important to get the read and we could definitely uh get the um, the sound reading done. The sooner the better. I think it'll give the neighbors comfort if you can show that they're gonna, it's gonna come in under fifty DBA.
We Rick and Mr. DeGoli, we were planning on doing that ourselves with our own sound meter, but we'd be happy to coordinate with Atherton Police if it would give the neighbors some peace of mind.
Uh, I have a question. Mona, uh, the issue on the definition of a special event.
Could you respond? I can respond to that. Um, Mayor DeGolia, Atherton Municipal Code, Chapter seventeen point fifty-six, uh subsection zero four zero D specifically addresses uh schools in country clubs. And the general rule is that schools are not required to obtain a special event permit from the town. Rather, they're supposed to comply with a resolution which the council adopted around twenty fifteen establishing um the parameters by which schools could have special events on their property. And that document, uh, it's the Guidelines for Special Events document states that schools are permitted to hold events on their property um between uh eight AM until six PM. Uh, and the request that we have today, I'm sorry, until seven PM Monday through Friday, six PM on Saturdays, the request before you is three forty-five PM to six fifteen on the weekdays. So it falls in line with the guidelines. It's consistent with the guidelines. So therefore, it's consistent with the town requirements. The other two provisions in the guidelines require compliance with the noise standards established by the town as well as the lighting. So in response to the previous question, the solution to that is also code enforcement. If there is a violation, if there is an exceedance of the town's thresholds, that's what we have our code enforcement for. So our existing rules in our municipal code contemplates this. It allows this and allowing this type of activity would not be in violation of our laws or codes.
Okay, so just to clarify, it sounds like what you're saying is that a special event permit is not required, but the uh, the staff report before us says that this is requesting a special event permit.
That's correct. The request is for a special event permit, but one is not necessary. Um, the only instance in which a special event permit would be necessary if there are um requests that exceed the parameters that are within the guidelines. And based on the staff report and everything that we've heard today, technically, one is not necessary.
Okay, so I I guess I have still have two questions on that.
Yeah, I guess Mona, sorry, we didn't talk separately about this, but my interpretation of that section with the guidelines is that um, any lighting associated with field or outdoor function used where lights presently do not exist shall be shielded or downlit. And then temporary lighting may not be added without a special event permit. So that's based on that section is why I'm referring this as a special event permit is the temporary lighting.
So what we're asking for the council is to review this request in conjunction with the school event guidelines. And to the extent that there's deviations from that, to be able to make findings that I'm sorry, can you hear me? Okay, sorry. Okay, um, to be able to find that this request is either wholly consistent with the school event guidelines or to the extent you wish to make deviations from it, to be able to um articulate that and have the applicant to agree to it. So again, with respect to noise, we already have standards. If the um applicant wanted to go beyond seven PM, for example, that would exceed the parameters in the special events guidelines. So you would have to make a finding that under the um unprecedented circumstances of the pandemic, that that's something that you would temporarily allow. Um, with respect to lighting, um Lisa is correct that that is um a a use that the special events guidelines specifically with respect to that require the council to authorize. Um, but otherwise, the application is consistent with that, and there is no violation of the municipal code should the council wish to move forward with this.
Okay, one other question I had on that, though, is that we are uh allowing an exception to a conditional use permit.
So the the conditional use permit addresses uh regular property interests and rights by the applicant. Um, so under regular circumstances, the school would not be able to have this kind of event indefinitely. A special event permit contemplate or special event activities, special events under the school event guidelines contemplate those kind of activities that are temporary in nature. So if this was a request to do it indefinitely, yes, they would need to amend their conditional use permit. But because it's temporary in nature and short duration, um, uh, we can do it in conjunction with the conditional use permit.
Then just to clarify, based on that analysis, are you saying that there's no conflict with a two-week limitation period?
Right, the two-week limitation period set forth in seventeen point fifty-six applies generally to other types of special events. Schools again are governed by the school event guidelines and not the rest of the uh sections in seventeen point fifty-six.
Okay, other comments? I don't know if Elizabeth is still on the call.
Through the mayor.
Yeah, please, Karen.
I I I have some comments. Um, uh, I actually am a former football player and understand the importance of the team uh component related to football in in general, so the relationships that you have. And I think that these are, this is, these are unprecedented times. And this is a time to think about exceptions um i- in in the interest of the health of our kids that we have. And I think that this, this is, this is one of those scenarios. Suicide rate, everything else is up high. The kids are running out of options to do things in a group capacity, uh, in a team spirit capacity, uh, in a school capacity. And um, I look at the light issue at the 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 sport issue as, you know, uh, a a health issue to the kids that we have in a way that they can release in a controlled environment. I and I do want to thank Fan uh by um expressing the level of detail that they have uh in uh safety. And I think that the the lights um on the regular field um on both fields, it's, you know, surprising a lot enough, probably even more important on the artificial turf, being a football player uh because of the accidents that have, but also in a policing capacity uh in a in a sense of staff having the ability to see clearly um all the players and everybody around to make sure that that environment's safe. So, you know, I am supportive of the uh, the special events permit. I I I understand the neighbors' concern, neighbors' concerns. And I think that's between staff and um the staff from the school, uh, we can work through the hurdle of potentially um, you know, going to the electric light component versus a diesel light component and staying in compliance with the um noise ordinance. Um, but again, you know, on that artificial turf, if that field is used um in a safety perspective, um, lighting is key, you know, not only for the players, but also for staff to keep an eye on um, um, the players. So those are, those are my comments and I and I thank everybody for participation. And I do realize that this is a single event, especially for me, so.
Okay, Bill. Bill? Um, so my concern, I guess, is is really the sound, well, two concerns. With the diesel lights, obviously, there's the noise component and then there's also the admissions component. And so I, you know, I would, I would like to have us possibly consider just approving electric lights. Um, and uh, and if we can, the concern, I think, I I know there's concern from all the neighbors all over. Um, but I think that the the Wonderlic neighbors um are especially impacted. And um, perhaps we ought to consider approval of Cartan and Wonderlic uh separately. I don't know if we can break it apart.
I have a comment.
Okay, Elizabeth.
So um, I I, my heart goes out to uh the school and the administration and the teachers and my daughter's a teacher and she's teaching online in the COVID environment. And she's got teenagers that are trying to learn and these kids have screen time all day long. And it's very, very difficult. And to the extent that we can get the kids out and uh exercise and play in a safe environment, uh, free from COVID uh exposure, I think that that is a really good thing. I feel um uh that um the school is doing a everything they can to try to uh uh do this in a uh thoughtful way to minimize the impact on the residents. My real concern is, like Councilmember Widmer was just mentioning, is the Wonderlic field. And of course, you know, uh, to use it as needed if Cartan is flooded or whatever and unable to be used. I I just think that that is um opening the door to maybe giving full uh carte blanche approval to use Wonderlic. And it really is right next door to uh homes and across the street from homes that are impacted quite a bit. Now, again, in this very, very special situation with the pandemic and the fact that, and I think Fan brought this up very, very clearly, that we have to uh consider that for weeks and months, uh, there was no noise uh generated by the schools at all for the residents. However, there's been construction noise, albeit. So that's different, but I I just uh, and um the peace of mind for residents is 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 really uh a concern for us as council members to uh try to make sure that our residents um can live peacefully in their neighborhoods. However, I do believe that in this very special circumstances, I think that everyone um could feel a little bit more compassion for the students. I guess um the six fifteen timeframe, could it be to six o'clock? And then, you know, the cleanup, you know, just kind of shorten it as much as possible. But it is a short period of time overall. The diesel noises, I I you just have to figure that out. And if it's within the noise ordinance uh requirements uh that Atherton has in place, then I don't see that we have um anything to uh argue about. So um, again, maybe we can take Wonderlic field as a separate issue. I would, I I don't know how to um bracket that and say uh that it could only be used X number of times, you know. I i- if it's raining, you're not going to be out there practicing anyway. This is, I guess, in the event that the Cartan field has been rained upon and is unusable. Uh, you have to kind of uh explain that to me a little bit more. That's my comment.
Okay. Uh, Fan, can you address that issue between Cartan and and Wonderlic? And whether there's any reasonable kind of things you could do to minimize the use of Wonderlic? I mean, it, I assume if it's raining, you're probably not going to be playing uh or practicing. Uh, can you protect uh Cartan field or do you? I I assume you don't currently protect it by covering it like uh professional sports fields when it rains and there's a game, they cover the field. You know?
No, no, we were gonna propose a dome, but you, we didn't think the town would support it. Um, so we haven't gotten to covering the curtain field yet. Uh, um, I I I will admit, um, Councilmember DeGolia, that I spent twelve years in Seattle where if you stop practices during the rain, you you would never practice. And so, so I I don't know that we we would, like, our football team practices in the rain when, you know, the few days where it where it rains in the fall. Um, unless it's lightning and it's dangerous, we typically do that. But, you know, we we may be able to sort of restrict things if if that was what was necessary. Look, you know, we think, we think our request is is reasonable. We've cut back the number of hours. We're we're well within the, you know, the seven PM end time, as you've heard. Uh, we didn't come in with a, you know, like, you know, an an opening offer, knowing that we were going to negotiate down. We just came with what we thought was right for the neighbors and the kids and and everybody. So our our hope is that you'll consider the request as as requested respectfully. Um, and then obviously, we would adjust if we were, if we were made to adjust.
Okay, any other comments from the council?
Yeah, Rick, I've got something.
Go ahead, Mike.
Sure. So I um I view this as as you pull back and say that um this has been a rough year. It's been a rough year all the way around. It's been particularly rough on on children and and students. Um, and I think it's just an undeniably good thing to give student athletes the opportunity to get out of the house and to exercise and to bond and to have companionship and to do all the things that school kids should do, but this year they're not really allowed to do. Um, and I view that as a very positive thing for the 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 students um and the school. On on the other side of this issue, I understand that there is some some imposition on the neighbors. And I I I say I'd note that it's it's two and a half hours a day for, I think it was eight weeks is what the figure came out to. Um, and that's, that is an imposition. There's just no, no question about it. Note that it ends at six fifteen and that practices, as far as noise, practices go on later than six fifteen. When I heard our objections and some of the comments, not our objections, our comments and some of the comments from from uh neighbors, I I think there are three things that that came up. There was, there was noise and and sort of COVID-related issues. And I don't think that we are looking to waive anything with regard to noise or or COVID-related issues. And that if there's COVID requirements that are in the schools, we've got to meet them, and that's that. Um, and similarly, there's no waiver of any noise-related stuff. So we're we're applying to town, the regular town ordinances relative to noise. Um, and and therefore, the issue is the lights. And I think we're, you know, I come back down is is that I I think it is a reasonable imposition, unfortunately, on a relatively small number of people to have lights until six fifteen. Um, and I would put that for both uh both fields, both Carton and Wonderlic. Um, so in in my, in my view, that, you know, I don't want to pretend there's no trade-offs. There are trade-offs. But that in this particular year we are in, which has just been a bad year for so many people, for so many reasons, this is a a little bit of of um relief from that bad year that that, you know, it sounds like a large number of students would benefit from. And so in my view, that the uh, the balance of of equities and and everything else would favor giving the school the permission to do the things that they've requested here until six fifteen. And again, we're not waiving anything with regard to the noise or or obviously any COVID-related issues. So that's, that's where I come down on this.
I have to agree with you, actually.
Say that again, Elizabeth. Do you have a comment?
I I I just have to agree with Councilmember Lempres about that because um when you look at the big picture, uh, it is a, a, you know, a small um imposition uh compared to a a greater benefit for children and the students um for a very short, and I do not believe it is a slippery slope. I do not believe this is precedent-setting, like, you know, what was requested for the um I do not believe this is precedent-setting, like, you know, what was requested for the, the um, homecoming game. So, I don't have any more comments about that.
I, I agree with you, I, I think that was well said, Mike.
Yes, well said.
I think that we are in a, a very uh, unusual time and, and unusual situation. I, I am impressed at how many kids came before us uh, and spoke on this. Uh, we, we received comments from well more than 100 residents on this. So I, I, I haven't added up all the number that came in from Sacred Heart, where, where there was just a huge number of comments, but it's definitely over 100. And, and I want the neighbors to know, notwithstanding that there are so many more residents directly related to these schools, from my perspective, that doesn't outweigh it to me. I'm just impressed that so many people stood up and feel strongly about the subject. And I hear what the neighbors have said. I, I, I think what, what Mickey and Paul and, and Stephanie Dishar said are, are very important comments. And um, I'm sorry to hear that uh, Stephanie feels like the school hasn't worked well with the neighbors. Uh, you know, from my more removed perspective, it looks like the school has gone out of its way uh, to work with the neighbors. And, and I guess that's more of a comparative statement than anything else. Uh, but uh, I think that this, this, this relationship is a relationship that we take very seriously. Uh, it's one of those instances where as council members were required to step into a conflict and, and try to weigh the issues and uh, find resolution that is going to protect our residents on both sides of the issue. And we have many residents with the school, so it, it's not just a one-sided thing. Um, I think it's very important that uh, we're not um, compromising the noise ordinance and that the school will comply with the county and the CIF regulations. Uh, and I understand that's why this is changed to not include December. Uh, I guess I would be most, and, and given that there's a break in January, and I'm just going to throw this out to the other council members, it seems like a possibility that we could say, well, let's set this up in two time periods. There's the time period up to the January break and there's the time period after the January break. And if there's anything that comes up prior to the January break that we could reconsider at our January meeting to cause a, um, an adjustment, then that might be a healthy thing. I, 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 I don't want to completely shut the neighbors out if, in fact, they end up with experience that is a, a really uh, very, very challenging experience, which it doesn't sound to me like it's going to be. Uh, and, and I understand that's, would occur more if there was more use of Wonderlic, because that's so much right in their backyards. But it, maybe we have an opportunity to use that break in January to an advantage where we could make some adjustment if we needed to.
February, it's in February.
Yeah, I was gonna say, it's not January, that would be too short of a timeframe.
So that's less relevant.
Like February 12th or something, yeah?
I'm thinking Martin Luther King Day, but it's really President's Week.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, uh, just, uh, as a matter of course, the special event permit that we're granting this evening would be reviewed on a semi-regular basis for continued compliance. And if at anywhere along that point, there are issues, we would be addressing them promptly. So you're, you're sort of going to have a review as we go along. And if, if it needs to be revoked because of non-compliance, it gets revoked.
Well, so let me clarify, George. Uh, uh, in fact, this is a special uh, events permit that you have the authority to issue without coming to the council. And you're bringing it to the council because it's such a sensitive issue, and which I, I think is totally appropriate. But it sounds like in the course of your review of it, which you, you have an administrative review of, you could make changes to that permit if, in fact, there's some indication from neighbors that there could be some change that would be a beneficial change. Is that accurate?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Are there any other comments?
There aren't, I'm, I'm more than happy to make this motion um, as presented by Stephanie.
And I'll second the motion.
And can you state specifically the motion, Mike?
I'm sorry, Stephanie had that slide that.
I can, I can read it if you'd like. Uh, move that the city council approved the special event permit to allow temporary lights at Menlo School for athletic practice from January 4, 2021, through March 14, 2021, until 6:15 PM on weekdays at Carton Field and Wonderlic Field as needed. And so we have a, a motion and a second, and so with the mayor's permission, I'll, I'll do the roll call. Councilmember Weest.
Aye.
Councilmember Lempres.
Aye.
Councilmember Widmer.
I'll give it an eye with the understanding that we're going to continue to evaluate the elec, the electrical use at, at Wonderlic Field. As Stan promised he would do.
Vice Mayor Lewis.
So I'll give it an eye uh, to that with the understanding that we're going to um, uh, only use Wonderlic Field uh, when absolutely necessary and, and as limited a capacity as, as possible.
And Mayor DeGolia.
Uh, yes, I, I, I support it. I agree with both of the qualifications that Bill and Elizabeth stated.
Motion passed, so we can now move on to the next item.
Moving on to the sacred.
I will, I will say goodbye, I'm recusing myself for this one, so nice to see you all, and.
Enjoy, enjoy the round table there.
You know, I'm gonna see if I can get on, I, I might not be able to log on, you know? Say what? Yes.
Just as, just to state it for the uh, record, Councilmember Vice Mayor Lewis is recusing herself due to the proximity of her residence to the location in accordance with the Political Reform Act.
Thank you, Mona, okay, goodbye, everyone.
And Mike? You gotta unmute.
Rick, Rick, could I also say something at this point?
Please.
Yeah, I just want to uh, make an announcement to the world, I guess, that I have a daughter who attends a middle school at Sacred Heart. Um, she does not play any of the sports that'd be affected by this, and I've consulted with Mona. Mona, please feel free to chime in. And I'm informed there's no conflict and there's no reason I would have to recuse myself from this uh, matter. So I intend to proceed.
That is correct, you have no, right, you have no conflict under the Political Reform Act, Government Code Section 1090 or any other law that would preclude your involvement and decision-making in this item.
Thank you.
Um, okay, uh, do we have a staff report on this?
Yes, thank you, I'll be giving the staff presentation. Anthony, if you want to start the slides. On the other hand, before you, it's a request from Sacred Heart Schools for a special event. As Sacred Heart Schools is located at Valparaiso. The campus is bound by Emily Avenue, Alena, Park Lane, and Valparaiso. And the school is located in the public facilities zoning district. And then you can just advance to maybe the third slide. Thank you. Sacred Heart Schools requests a special event permit to allow temporary field lights to accommodate athletic activities during the COVID pandemic. Sacred Heart has amended their original request to reduce the date ranges. So they would uh, like to start on January 4th and continue through March 12th on weekdays only. Their original request was to start on December 15th. They've also reduced the, reduced the end time from 7:30 PM to 7:00 PM and reduced the request from three fields to two fields, which now includes Palatella Field and Dollinger Field. And they would, they're eliminating Maury Field, next. So just to orient you on the map of Sacred Heart, Valparaiso and Palatella Field are at the bottom of the screen. And then Dollinger Field um, adjacent to Park Lane is at the top of your screen. Um, the church and a single-family home are located in Menlo Park across from Palatella Field. And single-family homes are located across Park Lane from Dollinger Field. Next. Um, identical to the last request you received, it's just limited to temporary lights for a limited dur, duration during COVID pandemic. They're still required to comply with county and state COVID regulations for activities and all other town regulations will remain in effect, including the noise ordinance. Next, the school sent a letter to neighbors informing them of the project and the town published as well as mailed notice on November 20th. Um, and as you, next slide, we have received numerous letters of support from this. Anthony, you can please confirm, I don't believe I've received any letters expressing concern about this project. And here's the motion, um, should you wish to approve it. I'd be happy to answer any of your questions. And the school is also here this evening to respond to your questions. Thank you, that concludes staff's presentation.
Right, any questions for members of the council?
Uh, what type of lights are there? Are they diesel or are they going to be electric?
Um, I'll have the school describe that, they've told me they're LED directional lighting, but we can clarify. Um, we also confirm that, that would comply with the town's noise regulation. Um, they're across the street from any residences, so they do have more of a space separation. But I can let them describe those lights more full and fully for you.
All right, good, thank you. And was there a reason that they eliminated one of the fields?
I would need to have them describe that.
Okay, that'd be great to hear the logic on that.
Yes, thank you.
Rick, if I could.
Yeah, please, Mike.
Yeah, just, um, Stephanie, I'll make sure I understand. Notification was provided to all the neighbors within what kind of radius?
Um, the town's um, public noticing requirement is 500 feet. And that is from the limits of the property. So we measure from the outside of the boundaries of the school and not just from the field location. So it was a quite a large mailing. And I'm Lisa, by the way, not Stephanie.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
Yeah, so you used to study, I haven't been here in a while.
Yeah, so sorry. Gosh, Lisa, um. Now I'm embarrassed.
It's a compliment.
Nah, well, the both of you. The um, my, my um, next question is, is I just want to confirm, so we sent out a large number of notices and there's been no.
Yes, we did.
No objection, no negative comments.
If I, if I could.
Anthony, can you confirm that? Because I know we got a lot of letters in.
Yeah, so we actually did get one in today later, after 5:00. Uh, it did go out to council and was posted online, but it, it came in late. It was from a Brittany um, Seiden sticker, I believe is the name. And uh, you know, I can read it if you'd like, probably within a two-minute timeframe. But it does note that she is in disagreement with the request, with the request.
Right, we'll, we'll, we'll take that public comment under public comments, Anthony, and I would like to read it.
Okay.
Are there any other questions? Uh, Carrie?
No.
I, I, I don't think we have any further questions, we'll take public comment.
We'd like to hear from the applicant first.
Oh, yeah, sorry, uh, Rich, would you like to address this? Sorry, I didn't mean to cut you out there.
No, no problem, thank you. Uh, this evening, along with me on this call is Mike Dwyer, our um, COO of the campus, and Brett Simon, our all-school athletic director. So please ask us any questions after I give my opening statement. I'd like to say thank you for considering our application for temporary lighting on two of our fields. One of field borders Valparaiso Avenue and the other Park Lane. The opportunity is just not about lights on a field or about sports or about Sacred Heart Schools. It's about community Sacred Heart Schools has been part of for over 122 years. Our mission has always been about community. Of the roughly 1,800 school-aged children in Atherton, preschool through 12th grade, distributed to nine schools, Sacred Heart has in recent times had between 18 to 25% of these children attend our school. And this represents about 25 to 30% of the total, our total student body. Our sense of community is defined by our commitment to the whole child. This means we seek to meet each student with curriculum and activities that demonstrate our goal of guiding each individual student on their journey to adulthood and citizenship. Our duty now is to ensure we can provide academic rigor, which promotes opportunities for co-curricular activities and provides a balance for physical and mental health. We don't know what the next six months will look like, but we do know is that we need to meet the needs of the whole child. We've learned that what works for one doesn't always work for all. This is why we're asking for the opportunity to extend our hours in safe and effective ways. Public health officials and medical doctors alike recommend we offer outdoor activities to help stimulate the mind and body of all our students. We have the support of our close neighbors and the Sacred Heart School families. You have the attached responses from 80% of our Atherton Sacred Heart families, which really means 74 families filled out the, the requests and are all in favor and, and expressed support for the temporary lights. We humbly request that you approve our application for temporary lights for two of our sports fields Monday through Friday. We did take off the Maury Field because we are going to be using the Maury Field throughout the day for some of our academic classes outside when we open up in January.
Right. Okay, thank you, Rich. Um, any specific questions for Rich based on his comments? I don't see any, uh, let's take public comment on this matter.
So, just to reiterate, if anyone would like to make a public comment, you have several options. You can use the chat feature, you can dial star nine if you're calling in by phone, or you can click participants at the bottom of your screen and use the hand raise feature. Um, I don't see any, but again, just to also note, if you submitted comments in writing, they've already been shared with council and will be included for the public record.
Although I think the last uh, right, written comment that you mentioned uh, wasn't shared, or I haven't seen it. So could you please read that one?
Yes, sir, let me pull that up. This is from a Brittany Seiden sticker, it's S.E.I.D.E.N.S.T.I.C.K.E.R. Hello, I am writing to note my disagreement with the request for the special event permit for Sacred Heart School, allowing them to utilize temporary lighting during the week. With the sun setting early, this will create excessive hours of added light pollution in a residential area. As someone who lives in a very close proximity to the school, I am concerned that having bright lights for multiple hours in the evening every single day will create excessive light shining at or into my house and disrupting our lives. If it was only for an hour or so a day in the earlier evening or only for a week or two, it would be different. But this request is for three hours of what will be darkness every night of the week for three months. It is an unreasonable request and places a burden on the surrounding neighborhood. It encroaches on our right to quiet enjoyment and has the potential to decrease property values, especially for those homes in close proximity. For these reasons, I think that the proposal should be denied or at the very least significantly limited. She thanks the council.
Are there any other comments? If, if anyone on the call wishes to make a comment, you're welcome to now.
And I have no other comments that I can see, sir.
Okay, well, let me bring it back to comments from the council.
Good, the mayor.
Yes, Carrie.
Um, I, I, I first want to start uh, and say, one, it, it is refreshing that the school did a extensive outreach um, of the community to give us a perspective of the support for um, the lighting and the physical activity component and the health and safety of the kids that go to the school. And I, it's, it's commendable that the school has done that. Um, I, I, I just said this a minute ago or so, or 10:15, whatever it was with Menlo. Um, I think this is a very important issue, um, because COVID has really struck the, everyone uh, in, in so many ways. And physical activity for kids is, is paramount, you know, because we're being kept up in our homes. Uh, a, a lot of us just aren't getting out. And the sport component um, is something that I think is, is incredibly important to our kids and frankly, important to us. I wish I could get out more. Um, but you know, I'm supportive of this. And um, I, I, again, I, I do want to thank Sacred Heart for all the work that they've done in advance. It makes my decision on this side a lot easier. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Carrie. Bill?
Yeah, um, I'd like to echo Carrie's comments. I, I do think that this um, is slightly different from the uh, Menlo School request, uh, due to the fact that you know, the one field faces a church that's not even being used during the week. Uh, so there really aren't any neighbors uh, that are affected. Um, they've had these football games where we've allowed them on a periodic basis to have the, the, uh, the fields lit and it's not been a problem. Uh, we haven't heard anything negative there. Um, you know, I would like to know what type of lights they're using. But uh, but I think that this is um, you know, a, a good request and I think that they've really thought this out, so fully support.
Thank you. Um, I can ask, Mike Dwyer, could you um, give a little bit more color to the lights, please?
Yes, I'm Mike Dwyer. I'm the Director of Operations for Sacred Heart Schools. The lighting we're going to use is um, a gasoline generator powered light. However, they are LED directional light that will go directly down to the field and are designed as such to not bleed beyond where the direction is um, guided. The other um, comment about heat over to the neighborhood, we have that at all, even with the standard lights we used on Palatella Field, uh, which you had commented is across from the church. And uh, those lights are, are not the ones that we'll be using. We'll be using a different type of light that will um, be more contained and more controllable.
So have you, I, I, I'm sure you listened to the previous conversations. Have you checked the decibel levels on, on the, the light generators?
I did. And, and again, we are um, we are blessed with having roadways around us. So um, where we have the generators, by the time any measurement of um, at the property line, the distance, the decibel levels will have dissipated and be about fifty DBA.
Okay, but do you know what the DBA is by the machines?
Yes, I do. It is a maximum of sixty-six. It starts uh, forty-eight through sixty-six and they will not be run uh, at a hundred percent. So that will be far less. So it'll probably start out at about sixty. And as you, all the distance away from the unit drops by six decibel points. So by the time it reaches any measurable area within the code, it will be below the maximum allowed by the town.
Okay, thanks, Mike. And Mike, while you're on the whites, did you look at the possibility of using electric? Uh, you're, you're muted. Anthony, can you, there you go.
Okay, now I'm clear. Um, no, we did not look at electric because when uh, the question, the question came late to us about the decibel levels. Um, however, when we looked into it, we were meeting the requirement from the town level, so we didn't go beyond that. My sense of looking at um, lighting and this type of machinery is that it's going to be very difficult to find electric lights for this function. It's really difficult as we heard from Menlo School, lighting levels are reduced. And when you have reduced lighting levels, you have safety issues. And we definitely do not want to have any safety issue. If we had looked for the electric lights, we certainly would do that. But at this time, we have, had not done so.
Are, are there any other comments? Mike, yeah.
Yeah, I, I would just say, I, I feel um, the same way about this application I did about the Menlo one, which is that, that this has been an extraordinary year and, and I heard um, Rich make reference to building community. And it's been a particularly difficult year for schools to build community, I would imagine. And I think that it's just, there's nothing but good things that can happen from students, student athletes being able to get out and exercise and, and spend time with their friends and, and candidly, just get out of the house and, and you know. Uh, and, and so I think that's a very, very good thing um, this year. I, I also think the trade offs here are less than they were in the, in the uh, Menlo School application in the sense that neighbors seem to be more removed. So it, it makes sense to me that the lights here would, you know, be on a little later. And, and I feel very comfortable about this, this application. Uh, the main thing I'm concerned about is that the COVID allows us to, and allows the school to actually get the kids out there playing and practicing. Yeah, but that's my thought.
Okay. Do I have a motion?
I'm happy to make, oh, go ahead.
Okay, I, I, you know, I'd like to move that the council approved the special event permit to allow temporary lights Sacred Heart for athletic and co-curricular activities beginning January fourth as allowed by the CIF and, and other league uh, administration uh, through March twelfth from seven PM, uh, from, well, it doesn't say what time, but from sunset to seven PM on weekdays at Patella and Dollinger Fields.
I, I, I will second that.
I'll do a roll call. Councilmember Weest.
Aye.
Councilmember Lempres.
Aye.
Councilmember Widmer.
Yes.
We'll note that Vice Mayor Lewis was recused from the item and uh, Mayor DeGolia.
Yes. Okay, and I think that ends the meeting.
Thank you, Rich.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone, for your comments. Is there any council reports?
Did you ask for any?
Well.
No, I didn't know that you asked one. I would have had one.
Oh, it's on the agenda.
Yeah, I know, but you normally we announce we want council report. I can, I can report that uh, you know, we've got our tenth vote and so we're in the process of uh, paying off our debt to the SBWMA. Uh, and the transition uh, is going to become more and more visible with green waste in the, in the coming days. And so uh, so I think that we've, we've uh, made a big step for our residents and I think that that's uh, you know, I think it's going to be a great contract for us. But in the meantime, uh, you know, my experience and people have complained about this or that with, as far as recology. And when I've spoken with the service people at recology, they're extremely responsive still. So there's no holding back, no animosity or anything like that. So very professional.
Any other report?
I can report that I still feel bad about calling Lisa Stephanie. And I'll just note, Lisa, that I, I use the word Stephanie a lot around my house, as I think you know, so.
Okay, can I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
That we uh, we, we adjourn.
There we go. See you all in two weeks.
Good evening. Thank you very much. Thank you.